It's six PM and I call this meeting of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Culp.
Here.
Mr. Posey.
Present.
Reading casualties, Chief Steckelmeyer, will you please proceed with the reading of casualties?
Good evening, Board. The following is the first responder casualty list for the period of October the second through October the fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Deputy Sheriff Lex Allen Love of the Wise County Sheriff's Office in Texas, end of watch October second, two thousand and twenty-four, and Park Ranger Kevin Grossheim from the National Parks Service, United States Department of the Interior, end of watch October sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Please join me in a moment of silence for these first responders. We have no special guests or presentations this evening, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? I motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I will second.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
And new business, Mr. Carlson, you have Resolution eighty-eight, twenty-four.
Good evening, Board. Resolution eighty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four is a resolution to authorize the township administrator to sign a local project, federal ODOT let project agreement for the state Route seven forty-one transportation project. Last year, Miami Township was awarded through the Highway Safety Improvement Program, about one point two million dollars toward the completion of this off-street path. This is the first phase from Fern Down Drive up to just south of six seventy-five with the eventual goal of connecting off-street path from Fern Down all the way up to Lyons Road. So this is phase one of a larger project, but again, this is the initial step to agree with ODOT that we are going to move forward and post on RFQ to get an engineer on the project so we can identify final engineering costs and the exact details of this off-street path. But again, this is about a ninety percent funding from ODOT, so it's a really great program to get started on this project. The remainder, the local match required, discussing with the Finance Director, either the Kingsridge TIF or Austin East TIF funds are both available to cover that. It's about two hundred thousand dollars, but again, to a one point two million dollar match, it's a great investment. So again, this would allow township administrator to sign the agreement and move us on to initial engineering, which will bring back more information to actually agree to a engineering contract before we move forward, but this would allow us to move to that next step. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to discuss.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Snyder, you have Resolution eighty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four.
Good evening, Board. We're going to present some information to date, or to you tonight regarding the American Rescue Plan funding and how that funding has been allocated to date. The conclusion of this, I will be turning this over to our Public Works Director to walk you through this presentation, but I just want to state again for everyone here tonight, Miami Township received funding through the American Rescue Plan beginning in two thousand and twenty-one and finalized a strategy for dispersment of these funds in early two thousand and twenty-three. We have until the end of two thousand and twenty-four to encumber the funds and the end of two thousand and twenty-six to spend the funds. It has always been a priority, the majority of these funds go towards forward-facing improvements within the community while also addressing critical facility and infrastructure needs. We want these funds to get out into the community in ways that would improve the community for as many residents as possible. This is why we have focused so much of the funding towards roadway and park improvements. With this goal in mind, we have to date successfully allocated the majority of the funds to equipment and infrastructure needs that the community can and will see through improved roadway paving, equipment that will improve our capacity to handle winter weather conditions, safer and more accessible parks, and improved park features. We have also invested in the preservation of public facilities by making critical repairs to buildings, enhancement of critical IT network infrastructure for all of our departments. We continue to evaluate needs as we wrap up the American Rescue Plan funding cycle. Mr. Schweickert will touch on this as we wrap up this presentation. I will now turn it over to our Public Works Director to give you more detail on the projects completed and underway to date and our next steps.
Good evening, Board. So going through these slides, I'll touch on some of the equipment and some of the use of the expenditures for the American Rescue Plan funding. In two thousand and twenty-three, early two thousand and twenty-three, we had Resolution twenty-six to replace an aging fleet of parks trucks. Now, one of the things I'd like to touch on with these trucks is it actually gives more versatility out in the field. You can see that we have a piggyback box system where we can put tools, chainsaws, and other parks needs, so that way there's no need to come back to our facility. They can adjust on the fly in the parks network. Also has drop-down sides, so when we do mulch or other sort of planting landscaping, we have material that is easily accessible. Again, the fleet was aged, two thousand and one, two thousand and five, and two thousand and eight, and without a dedicated revenue stream in the parks system, it was hard to meet these capital needs. Resolution twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three, and Resolution sixty-one, two thousand and twenty-three was the allocation to replace three of four Sterling trucks. In two thousand and nine, Sterling closed its manufacturing plant and we lost the support from Sterling. Maintenance costs were creeping up due to not having that allocated plant to help us on our needs, so the Board graciously helped us replace these three trucks. The three Sterlings we're getting ready to list for auction, and we should be able to outfit our fourth truck with selling the three previous. But again, these three trucks, they have increased safety capabilities with advanced stopping and more detailed outputs for salt and de-icing removal for our EPA reporting. Again, Resolution seventy-four, two thousand and twenty-four was the allocation to replace a aged vehicle, but this also supports the grant that we received from the Ohio EPA for the chloride reduction grant. This truck will be as pictured, it'll have drop sides, and it'll also have a dedicated de-icing platform from this grant. So we'll have a lot more versatility with this specific truck. Again, some of the theme with our equipment that we're trying to replace is to not just have one vehicle for one standard function, but to be able to have multi-uses throughout the year, really supports our capital needs. Resolution eighty-three, two thousand and twenty-three, and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-four are administration building repairs. If any member of the community has been in our community room, we've seen, you know, leaking on the walls and other things, so this is a much-needed improvement of our gutter systems, windows, stucco repairs, and masonry work. Resolution one oh three, two thousand and twenty-three was a resolution to do BOT improvements. We get to use the new projection system, side monitors, and microphones, so that way our residents can clearly hear us and understand what is going on in the boardroom. Resolution fifty-five, two thousand and twenty-four, and Resolution seventy-one, two thousand and twenty-four, IT hardware for all township departments. This included replacing our wireless access points that were aged, computers, computer equipment that we had aged, software for Public Works, and then cybersecurity upgrades to make sure that our information does not get compromised. Some of the exciting parts of this American Rescue Plan fund is the park improvements. Resolution fifty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four included Layer Park Shelter roof replacement and the metal doors. And in this picture, you can see what we're trying to accomplish. We have a blue metal roof, we have new paint to match the township gray and the blue, and eventually we'll have newer picnic tables, benches, and trashcans. Also, when you come to a township park, you know you're at Miami Township, so we're trying to increase our branding as well. Miami View received metal door replacement, Cranes Run South Shelter received a roof similar to Layer Park, and Layer Park received a new swing set, and in conjunction with that swing set was fall zone material for all the parks. And then lastly, we received ball diamond maintenance equipment to help with our ball diamonds for future use. Resolution seventy-one, two thousand and twenty-four, roadway resurfacing in two thousand and twenty-four. Early this year, it was decided by the Board to do all of the resurfacing schedule from two thousand and twenty-five to allocate in two thousand and twenty-four as well, so we used American Rescue Plan fundings to pave a little over five miles of road when our net average is around two. Also seventy-one, two thousand and twenty-four is Miami View Park Playground Submission. This is a beautiful-looking playground that we're trying to acquire through the ODNR grant submission. It comes with aesthetic softball turf, new shade structures, aged play area apparatus. It also has inclusive features such as braille and other things to help so all kids have accessibility in our parks. We also have musical instrument area to play as well. We would love to turn our park system around so that way, again, the branding with the arrowheads, that way everybody knows you're coming to Miami Township and you can actively see these improvements happening before your eyes. And Resolution eighty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four tonight is a continuation of park improvements that we have identified. It involves new drinking fountains at Miami View Park and Cranes Run Park. As you can see on the left, it's a new drinking fountain that has stainless steel structure, it has a sidecar for ADA compliance, so if you're in a wheelchair and you come to a park, you can still maintain a drink, and it has a little side for your pets. So depending on whether you're walking the Great Miami River Trail or venturing to one of our other parks, all can enjoy a fresh drink of water. This resolution also includes six grills used through multiple parks. Our current grills do not have lids and last five to ten years, and the current age is over ten years, so these new grills will have covers over top, it'll enhance the cooking experience and create longevity. Another item on this list is Cromer Park. The tennis court down at Cromer Park needs to be replaced, so we have various quotes to get that removed. Additional information for Cromer and how we plan to improve it over the next few years is coming to the Board soon. And then the last item, which we're really excited about, is creating a bike hub station. Bike hub station includes a deluxe work stand, which you can see in this picture, so that way, and it's made of stainless steel, so those that do bike will have a place along the trail to stop and fix your bike, there's tools attached to it, there's a wheel chock to set your bike in while you can adjust and pump your tires. Along with this bike hub station, we are also including a small shelter, and again, this is going down at Cranes Run where we're going to have that water station there, so it really doesn't matter whether you're bicycling, jogging, or doing any other activity along the Great Miami Trail, you have a destination stopping point to get refreshments, to take a rest. And then in conjunction with this, outside of this specific resolution, Waldrew Park has a dedicated streaming revenue. We are doing the same bike hub station and drinking fountain at Waldrew Park since there's a route through there as well. So again, brand identity with the blue, but creating stations for people to come and go and rest and replenish, so that's Resolution eighty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four. And then I will pass this over to Clay or Chris for the future allocations. I'd be happy to answer any questions on what I provided for this resolution, any of the current improvements.
Questions? No, thanks. I appreciate seeing the improvements, and I think it will create a branding for our township, which is very important at this time, because I'll just mention, in what, five years, we have a bicentennial coming up, so we're going to raise that awareness over time, so I appreciate the parks looking into the future.
Thank you.
Chief Steckelmeyer.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Clay, did you want to touch on the?
I was just going to remind everybody that we still have, if you look at the pie chart on your screens, we still have three percent of the total allotment that we received that has yet to be allocated to a specific purpose, and then we'll be bringing forth additional final recommendations for approval. And then this is just an update of, should Resolution eighty-nine pass tonight, this would be the new distribution, park improvement efforts would go up to twenty percent, and unallocated would drop down to three. It does currently stand at eighteen and five at present.
All right, thank you. Chief Steckelmeyer, you have a liquor permit.
Yes, Board, again, in your packets, I included a application for an existing liquor permit, and this is coming from O'Charley's, doing business with O'Charley's, at twenty-two sixty Miami'sburg Centerville Road. The reason for this permit is the stockholders have changed, and when that happens, it's a pretty much a procedure within the Ohio Liquor Commission to, again, reapply for the liquor permit. It's the same liquor permit, it's a D-one, a D-two, a D-three, and a D-six liquor permit, so there's not going to be any changes as far as what was already at that establishment. And again, this is just merely a housekeeping thing for liquor control, that since the stockholders changed, they're going to reactivate this liquor permit, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? All right, now's the time, it's the portion of the meeting when Miami Township residents are invited to share their thoughts with the Board. Your comments are valued and are taken into consideration. The Board does not engage in dialogue at this time, and presentations are limited to five minutes each. So I know we have speakers, welcome everyone, so who's first? Would you please state your name and the address before you speak?
I'm Loua Fowler, under the sixty-eight sixty Lorian Woods Drive. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing us to bring the concern of our community to your attention. It's something we've been working on for quite a while without any success. My home is immediately adjacent to the boundary area between the Lorian Woods community, which is a community of fifty condominium units, and the Vienna Springs Senior Community, and I, along with my neighbors, have been exposed to an ongoing eyesore for more than two and a half years now. Beginning in early two thousand and twenty-two, we observed the cutting down of numerous mature trees in the boundary area between Lorian Woods and Vienna Springs. Those trees were simply left lying where they fell for months until heavy equipment was brought in to strip away virtually all of the mature vegetation along the boundary area. This activity was followed several months later by the digging and laying of a sanitary sewer line to service MI Homes and Redwood Apartments in the Chamberlain Crossing Development. Upon the completion of this construction, the entire site, by then, which was just a wide swath of ungraded dirt and mud, was left for more months until eventually being roughly graded with a bulldozer, and grass seed and straw were scattered over the entire area. Today, our view from the rear of our homes on the western side of Lorian Woods is one of manhole structures, unkempt grass, and some leftover construction debris, and that exists to this day. My fellow HOA Board member, I should have mentioned, I am a member of the Homeowners' Board of Lorian Woods. My fellow Board member, Mike Majes, and I have reached out to our Community Development Director, Alex Carlson, on numerous occasions via both emails and phone calls to express the concerns of the Lorian Woods community. More often than not, we got no reply from Mr. Carlson or his office. On June fourteenth of this year, Mr. Majes and I made an unannounced in-person visit to the township offices, and we were able to meet face-to-face with Mr. Carlson. He was courteous, he listened to our concerns, and said that he would meet personally with representatives from MI Homes and Redwood in order to come up with a plan of action for cleaning up the site. Mr. Majes and I left that meeting hopeful that at last, something would be done. I do know that Mr. Carlson subsequently met onsite with a representative, I believe it was Greg, from Redwood Apartments, and I believe that was on July twenty-fourth, and we took that meeting as a positive sign, that that meeting had taken place. We had requested some feedback on such a meeting, but again, did not hear anything from Mr. Carlson. So here we are, with the two thousand and twenty-four construction and planning season rapidly running out, no closer to a solution than we were two and a half years ago. Our community's sense of frustration only continues to grow as we continue to look at the mess in our backyards. Knowing that Miami Township is a community that prides itself on both its visual appeal and its quality of life, it is my hope that our elected officials will now step in and see that the eyesore that directly affects the Lorian Woods community, but that also sits immediately adjacent to the western entry of the broader Vienna Park community and their new brick monument announcing that it's the Vienna Park community, we would hope that this mess is finally addressed and that those responsible, namely MI Homes and Redwood, on whose behalf all of this work was undertaken and who left this mess behind, we would hope that that is addressed and something is finally done to hold those people accountable and make them fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also am grateful for the opportunity to speak.
Can I, sorry to interrupt, but can I get your name and address before we?
Yeah, that was coming, Mr. Culp.
Maybe you were getting to that, sorry about.
Yes, my name is Mike Majes. I live at sixty-eight sixty-eight Lorian Woods Drive, and I too am a current Board member of the Lorian Woods community. And now I thank you for listening and giving us the opportunity to present this evening. Lorian Woods has been waiting, 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 and this waiting, quite frankly, has exhausted our patience. As Lou Ayers mentioned, over two years ago, Redwood MI Homes began tearing down a tree brush barrier that separated our community from the Vienna Springs Senior Community for purposes of installing a sewer line for their development. In doing so, Redwood MI Homes left an unsightly tree and debris-laden mess which adjoins the backyards of eleven Lorian Woods homes. The ground in question is owned by Vienna Springs. Beginning in May, two thousand and twenty-three, we attempted through Mr. Carlson to have this situation remediated, and each time we have interacted with Mr. Carlson, we have been promised action but with no forthcoming results. We acknowledge that the township did not create this mess, but as residents of the township, it is imperative that the township get this matter resolved on behalf of its residents. Mr. Carlson informed us that both Redwood MI Homes and Vienna Springs have acknowledged their responsibility, but the old adage is so true that action speaks louder than words, and the time for action is long past due. Ohio Revised Code Section five oh five point eight seven provides in part that a Board of Township Trustees, like yourselves, may provide for the abatement, control, or removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris from land in the township if the Board determines that the owner's maintenance constitutes a nuisance. And if the abatement, control, or removal is not done, any costs incurred by the Board in performing that task shall be entered upon the tax duplicate and become a lien upon the land. In a July twelfth email to Mr. Carlson, we asked that he, as a township official, take action to enforce the remediation and maintenance of this space. We now ask you, as trustees, to assume responsibility to remediate the ground and at township cost, if necessary, as provided in the Ohio Revised Code. We respectfully request a response from you as township trustees within the next thirty days. Lorian Woods residents have been patient far too long, only to be left waiting, waiting, waiting. And if I may approach, we have, Mr. Ayers and I have put together a package for both of you to look at what we're talking about and to see some of the pictures.
Sure, thank you.
On this deck.
I appreciate it. So Alex, have you been out there recently? Do you have recent pictures or?
I have a package. I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay, I'll meet with you afterwards and we'll take a look at this package. Okay. Okay.
Alex, who is it you? What are the topics that we're discussing?
May I ask, Alex, has there been any, I guess, progress to date from Redwood? Have they, I guess, has, since the trees were originally removed, has there been anything done out there?
Yeah, so last, last time. Alex, I was talking to Alex. I was talking to him. 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 I was talking to him.
Okay, maybe you and I can meet with a couple of these neighbors out there on site and walk the property and talk about what the issues are exactly as they seem. Okay. Thank you. Are there any other speakers tonight? Thank you for the input tonight, and I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. We are now approaching, the public comments portion of this meeting is now closed, and we will now consider the vote of resolutions and motions. I motion to approve Resolution eighty-eight, twenty-four, a resolution to authorize the execution and delivery of an LPA Federal ODOT let project agreement for the MOT state Route seven forty-one transportation project within Miami Township. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
I motion to approve Resolution eighty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four, a resolution to approve the amendments to the appropriation of funds for two thousand and twenty-four. Can I get a second?
I will second.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
I motion to approve a liquor permit for O'Charley's LLC at twenty-two sixty Miami'sburg Centerville Road, Dayton, Ohio, four five four five nine. Can I get a second?
I second.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
We do not have any public hearings tonight, so I'll go directly into Department Head Comments. Chief Steckelmeyer.
I have none this evening, thank you.
Okay. John Schweickert.
Good evening, Board. I just wanted to touch on that leaf collection is quickly approaching. As of right now, we have it scheduled for Monday, November fourth. However, as in years past, I take in account that there are streets out there that don't have sidewalks and trick-or-treaters, we don't want We don't want them to be way out in the street. So if, for instance, we do start early, please check our website. I have, I do daily updates on our website, where we're at, where we're going to be, how leaf collection is going. So I just want to make that note for our residents, and also, please help us out by not putting sticks in the leaf piles. It really slows our progress down. But other than that, looking forward to leaf collections. So thank you.
Sounds good. Can you keep Facebook updated too, perhaps, with Jill?
I don't know, about every day, but we can do, we can do some sort of?
As you're able to, I guess.
Yes, we can do some sort of social media update about leaf collection.
Thanks. Alex Carlson?
Just one quick comment, Board. ODOT District 7 is initiating a formal safety study on State Route 725. Just taking a look at all of the existing traffic counts, signal timing, potential upgrades to make certain areas of the corridor safe. And this is from almost all the way over to 741, all the way over into Washington Township. Public Works Director John Schweickert and I got to be on that kickoff call. So again, it's an ODOT-initiated project, but wanted to make you aware that that is a study item. We look forward to bringing back recommendations from ODOT in ways that we can potentially participate in improving that entire area from beautification, aesthetics, but then, again, most importantly, safety. So just want to make you aware that that's ongoing, and again, look forward to more updates.
Okay. Thank you.
Finance Director Clay McCord?
I don't have any additional comments.
And Administrator Chris Snyder? Mr. Matthews?
No comments tonight, sir.
Mr. Posey?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the Lorian Woods residents for coming out and presenting a very well-organized presentation on the issues that face them. Unfortunately, sometimes Township Trustees aren't aware of things until citizens like yourself come forward. And I have to tell you, this is the best presentation we've seen from citizens since I've been a trustee. We look forward to getting to work on it and appreciate you bringing it to our attention in such a meaningful and well-communicated fashion. Thank you.
And I would echo those same comments. Mike, I appreciate you bringing this out to our attention, and I thank everyone for attending. I know that sometimes it impacts your schedule, but it does, it is meaningful for us, and we will take a look at it and try to resolve this issue to everyone's satisfaction. So thank you. Tonight, we have a work session, and we have, we have two work sessions, and we have an executive session. We'll be going into the conference room next door. The work session is open if anyone's interested in sitting, in sitting through it. But there's not a lot of room in there, so you might want to make your decision based on that. And then the executives, after the executive session, we'll end the meeting. So you're free to go if you'd like to.
Tom, do we need a motion for work session?
I'll now motion to enter into a workstation to discuss the adult-use cannabis survey response in the 2025 appropriations budget.
I will second.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.